Okay, everyone, thank you. We are excited to have a full house today. This is so exciting to see all of you. Thanks for joining our city council meeting. Our opening will be, oh, so, okay, start over. So, welcome to city council meeting for Thursday, September 4th, 2025. The opening will be presented by Councilmember Nate Jackson, who will then lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All right. I'd like to welcome everyone here. It's so nice to see so many faces in these seats and proud of our youth that's here and about what they're about to accomplish and do here tonight. So, I will start off with a prayer, then we'll say the pledge. Dear Father in heaven, we are grateful that we can be here tonight, grateful to be citizens of this great country and residents of this community, and thankful for all of our blessings and for those who participate in the process and also work toward the common good and to build a legacy that is something to look back on with pride and joy. And we are grateful to be serving the community in this capacity and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Everyone, please join me in the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Okay, our first item on our agenda is called Call to the Public, but we don't have anyone signed up to speak, so we will pass Call to the Public and we will move on to Presentations and Awards. So, this is so exciting to have all of you All-Stars here. I just wanted to take a quick picture. Is that okay? From here, because this is fun. Smile, everybody. Okay, let's see. That's a fun view from the front here. Okay, so Brian White is going to come down and introduce you.
All right. So, we held the Northern Utah All-Star Tournament here in Kaseville in the month of July, right after the Fourth of July. Two weeks of games down at Barnes Park. We also had some games at Ellison and Oak Forest in Leighton, and then also in Farmington. But the bulk of it came through Kaseville, and then we had three different, uh, sorry. We have three boys divisions and three girls divisions with the softball, and we had an over forty-two teams that competed. And in two of the age groups, we had the number-one team when it was all said and done. So, they had to do a pool play, and then it went to a double-elimination tournament. And one of our teams, the fifth and sixth-grade team, had to win two in that last day because they came out of the loser's bracket, but they were able to beat Farmington twice that night, which was really awesome. And then our third-grade team, they did great. They won all the way through and didn't have to play that second game against Farmington, so that was awesome.
Awesome.
So, first, I'm going to have Zach Olson come up here. He's our coach for the third and fourth-grade team. Our fifth and sixth-grade coach could not be here because he's coaching at the high school right now with a sophomore football team. So, Zach represents our city very well. He has been helping us since he moved here a little while ago, and he's been a great resource for these kids, and he's all-in. So, I want to give him a round of applause first. And I appreciate everything you do. Now, if we can have all the kids come up here, all the All-Star winners come on up here, we're going to get a picture with this trophy.
Good job, Kaseville! So awesome.
Here's Brett Ellis. Let's get everybody in here. If there's any other coaches that are here, I didn't see any other coaches, but we got both of the teams represented here, so. And then we'll have a city council, if you guys want to come down after we do this one. Okay, let's look right back here.
Yeah. Right.
See everybody?
We'll be in the token picture.
There you go. You got that trophy? Don't drop it, bless you. All right, everyone smile. Say Kaseville!
Woo-hoo!
All right. City Council want to come down? Mayor want to come down? Cole, you want to come on in? Cole's our Parks and Recreation Director. He can't do without me.
All right, one more time for the state of all.
Hey, okay, hey, I got to come here real quick. You guys, we're going to come over here, and you're going to run by, and we get to slap your hands. There we go. A council tunnel. Here we go.
Are we doing a tunnel or a hand?
On both sides, they come down.
Okay, okay.
All right, here we go. All right.
My sister-in-law has told me I need to start showing up to the All-Star Games because they're so much fun. Okay, thank you, All-Stars. That was really great to have you. We appreciate you being here. Okay, our second opportunity today is to present our Youth Court, our new Youth Court members. So, Kim Smith is the Youth Court Advisor, if you'll come down and introduce everybody. Thanks, Kim.
All right. So, most of you guys know this is my last year. Yeah. My husband's sitting back there making sure that I don't commit to another year. So, anyway, so it's like my last chance to talk to you guys, so I just thought I'd come up for one second and just tell you thank you for your support over the last twenty-five years. It's been an amazing program, and it's truly like kind of defined who I've been the last twenty-five years, which is really cool. I told Mark, like after I retired and then we sold our businesses, like Youth Court still gave me a purpose, so I appreciate that. But I have a horse now, so hopefully that's what'll give me purpose in life, is my horse.
You'll be busy.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that brings me to my next point, and it's that I am not like leaving the Youth Court high and dry. I am so excited about the people that are taking over for me, so I just want to say just a couple of words about them. The first that most of you guys know is Randy Von Bosie. And this is kind of an interesting story. I don't even think she knows this, but she started working with us last year, and I was really excited because she's an amazing person. And so, we were going, and I'm like, this is going to be great. And then all of a sudden, I heard that she was running for city council. I'm like, my heart like sunk. But, I mean, I knew she could do both jobs, but I was still like a little bit sad, and I'm not going to say that I like prayed that she would continue to do Youth Court, but I might have. Anyway, and then like God works in mysterious ways, but through no fault of her own, she was forced to not run for city council. And I was actually really sad by that because I think Kaseville is really missing out on a great leader, not having her as potentially a city council person again. But I also was really happy too, because I know that she's going to devote just her time and talent to Youth Court and that we're really lucky for that. So, yeah, I'm happy for Randy. Second, the second person, and this is just kind of a miracle too, her name's Natalie Clemmons. She grew up as Natalie Cutler, and she actually was one of the first, very first judges of the Kaseville Youth Court, way back in 2000. And her son is one of my judges right now, and she, her son said to me, I think my mom might be interested. Oh, my goodness, that was an answer to press to you about. Anyway, so, I'm leaving it in good hands. We are so busy this year already. I don't have statistics for you, but we are going gangbusters, and I appreciate the Police Department for their support of the program and just the city council and the city itself. But I'm going to have Natalie come up and just talk to you for one minute about Youth Court. I'm not going to say anything else, and then Randy will come up and introduce the judges.
Thank you, Kim.
I'm Natalie, and as Kim said, I joined Youth Court when I was in high school twenty-five years ago, and it was a great opportunity to learn leadership skills. I was interested in maybe the legal system at the time, and it was a great way for me to serve the community. You guys probably know that Youth Court is a way for not only volunteers to serve as youth on the panel as judges, but it's also a way for youth who make a mistake to have that second chance and have it erased by going through Youth Court. It's a great way for those that do minimal crimes, like the class BRC misdemeanors, to come and start over and be mentored by other youth in the community, people they can look up to. I know that as a judge, it taught me great leadership skills. It taught me ways to stand in front of people and speak. I was able to meet other Youth Court judges from across the state, from across the nation, and it was a great way for me to learn respect for the judicial system as well as for my elders and for the community. And I know that a lot of times we think about we're helping the youth who commit the offense, and we're giving them a second chance, but it's also such a great opportunity for the youth who serve on the court to learn leadership skills and a way to give back. And I'm just glad I get to be a part of it again. And I'm going to turn the time over to Randy.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go quick through this. First and foremost, we're grateful for Abby Hunt for being our liaison with the council. She comes and interacts with the kids, and it's a great, it's great to have her there. Also, Officer Criddle is amazing. He comes from, his job at Davis, being on campus there and helps us out over at Youth Court every Wednesday night. I'm just going to go through and read the names of our Youth Court judges. We have twenty-one currently that have gone through the whole application process. I know we've got three more that may be interested, so we may come to, you know, twenty-four in the next couple of weeks, which is an incredible number of these great kids. So, in no particular order, just the order that Tina gave me their names last year. I'll call your names if you want to come up here, and then we'll do the swearing-in and take a picture. All right. First, Claire Chaney, Lisa Von Bosie, Lexi Broadbent, are they coming up? All right, just making sure. Lexi Broadbent, Haley Christiansen, McKay Clemmons, Landon Jacobs, Nisi Kuma, Owen Clark, Eric Jung, Bryn Stevenson, Mary Lindberg, Brody Shepherd, Becky Anderton, Abigail Mortenson, Grace Collado. I don't know if Grace is here this evening. She had to work. Johnny Cunningham, Brock Hoagland, Vivian Hardy, Katie Harmon, Emma Wright, and Sierra Is there anybody that I missed that is here that has, all right, I think we're there. These are our wonderful 2025-26 Youth Court judges, and I'll turn it over to the mayor.
All right, you guys, this is so exciting. I'm excited that you're willing to do this, and we appreciate the service that you're going to render for your fellow students. Okay, congratulations on being chosen as a judge for the 2025-26 Youth Court. You will be performing a great service for our community, and we appreciate and recognize you for your service. Membership in the Kaseville Youth Court is a privilege. As a member of the Kaseville Youth Court, you are expected to serve as a role model for the community at all times. You are expected to uphold the strictest ethical rule of confidentiality. You are expected to demonstrate outstanding citizenship in school, at home, and in the community, and we congratulate you on your achievement and your willingness to do this. This is a big responsibility. You're going to be talking to students that have done things and made mistakes, and they don't need to be humiliated for it. They need to go through the process and learn to be mentored and have an opportunity to be better, and that's what you get to do. So, this is a trusted role for you. Okay, I will now ask you to raise your right hand for the administration of the Kaseville Youth Court Membership Oath. So, if you'll each raise your right hand. Okay, and these are yes questions, all right. Do you solemnly affirm that you will keep confidential all information that comes to your knowledge as a member of the Kaseville Youth Court?
Yes.
Do you solemnly affirm that all your actions as a member of the Kaseville Youth Court will be free of bias and prejudice toward any other person's age, race, sex, religion, national origin, or disability?
Yes.
Do you solemnly affirm that you will faithfully discharge and perform all responsibilities and duties required of you as a member of Kaseville Youth Court?
Yes.
Okay, as the mayor of the city of Kaseville, I now appoint you as official members of the 2025-26 Kaseville Youth Court. Thank you. And will you guys stay here because we want to come and shake your hands, okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, so now, any of the shorter people come in front so we can take a picture and get you all. Tall people, wide rate, short people. No, you're going to.
Come in, come in right here.
Yeah, for sure.
But before everybody files out, let me tell you, I sure wish that when I was seventeen years old and getting picked up for shooting bottle rockets out of moving vehicles, that there would have been a Youth Court. Because for the last forty-few years that I've been working and having to re-up a security clearance every five years, I still have had to explain what that was all about when I was seventeen years old. And so, to have been able to have done something like this and not to have to go through that hassle would have been pretty sweet. So, thanks for what you guys do, really.
Yeah, Barry, I'm glad you shared that. People don't realize that, that that follows you. Thank you so much, you guys. You are welcome to not have to stay for the meeting. You can leave if you want. If you'll just shut the door as you leave, that would be great. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, unless you really want to stay, you are more than welcome.
Really, really, really.
All right, I was just going to mention that Kim had shared that during her twenty-five years, she has dealt with more than thirteen thousand cases, no, thirteen thousand community hours, and it's more than one thousand forty-five cases and four hundred and forty judges that she's been able to work with over the last twenty-four years. So, it's a long time. It's good. Okay, council, do we have any conflicts of interest as we move forward?
No.
No, okay. So, consent item five A, resolution authorizing the application of seized property to public interest use. Does someone like to?
I will make a motion when you approve consent item A.
Okay, motion second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Hunt?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Number six A, an ordinance amending section twelve dash three dash three, sale of burial rights, subtitle twelve, parks, public property, and recreation of the Kaseville City Code. Cole, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, this is a follow-up from our work item last council regarding the sale of burial rights specifically for non-residents of Kaseville. Back in February, we changed the ordinance to where it was Kaseville-only. Residents that had the ability to purchase spaces. Now, there are some carve-outs for what is deemed a resident, you know, that doesn't change, but what we did eliminate was the ability for non-residents. There was some desire to maybe look for a pathway that a non-resident of Kaseville could choose Kaseville, that was something that they were desirous to do. And so, what was before you today is the amended ordinance that just simply includes and non-residents, and then the associated fee schedule with that, which mimics similarly what you, what one would go to Leighton Lindquist or a private cemetery. And so, our target is to try to be above those private sectors so that it does still provide a path for a non-resident, but it's got, I guess, a cost, a fee. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Everyone had a chance to review it?
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Hunt?
Can I just make some comments? I spoke with Cole, so I don't know that I necessarily have any questions. But I guess one question just for everyone to understand is, do you feel like this approach would make the cemetery run out of space sooner, like a lot sooner?
Not a lot sooner. I think the, what we put in place as far as the ability to only purchase at need has really slowed. That what we can control in the cemetery is the selling of the burial rights. That's what really affects how fast the cemetery is quote "sold out." This doesn't, this won't have a great impact. It will maybe speed it up a few years, but not anything drastic. So, hopefully that answers the question.
Yeah, that does, thanks. I think that was kind of my only question.
Cole, I thought a couple of weeks ago, I thought the numbers were going to be a little bit higher.
So, there's some components to the burial rights. So, this is, this specifically just is the burial, the purchase of the burial rights space. You also have to take into account when someone comes, there's the interment fee, and then there's the perpetual care fee. We already had those fees for non-residents, so when you add all three of those fees up, it does equal above the private sector. So, this, yeah, because this was eliminated from the consolidated fee schedule, and so it's reintroducing it to the consolidated fee schedule with the adjusted burial rights. The other fees remain the same for non-residents that previously owned the burial rights space.
And could I continue?
Oh, man.
And I personally, I still think it's too soon to change it since it's only been six months, it's been earlier this year, and think we should let it go at least a year, if not a couple of years before readdressing it, but that, I just want that to be on record.
Anyone else? No? Okay, thanks, Cole. I totally understand your hesitancy in thinking that we put this into place, but I think sometimes, especially something like this, it's okay to look back. And the reason for it coming back up on the agenda is that we did, over the course of the last six months, have, we had three inquiries, and it might not seem like a big deal, three inquiries, but there are three people that wanted to be buried in Kaseville that used to be residents of Kaseville and did contribute when they were residents that were not allowed to be, and there was just no path for them to be buried according to our current ordinance. And so, even though we did change it pretty recently, and I understand maybe wanting to wait it out, I felt like there was enough interest that it would be nice in the future to be able to catch that and have an opportunity for people who have moved away but still would like to feel, to be here, to give them that path forward. So, I don't think it, in my mind, it, I mean, it's not a, it's not a big, it's not a big deal to change it, but I understand, you know, your perspective there, so. Okay, anyway, I'm rambling. Anyone else? Okay, yes, Councilmember Adams?
Oh, I just, yeah, I feel like, I feel like there's a lot of history, not only in our cemetery, but just in our town, and I think that is really important to some people to be buried in Kaseville. Like, we were doing a thing in Park City, my, over the weekend, my dad had us all up there, and of course, he had a microphone, and so he started talking about genealogy. And he was mentioning, I mean, I don't know, this almost sounds, makes me sound inbred, but he was mentioning that Brigham Young had sent, I think it's John Thornley and his family to this area as well as Elias Adams, and those two came in. And John Thornley is my mom's great-grandpa, great-grandpa, and Elias Adams is my dad's great-great-grandpa. And so, like, it's crazy that they were sent in as the first settlers, but there's a lot of their posterity from my family that don't live in Kaseville and don't have plots but come up here every Memorial Day to visit the graves. And so, I guess what I'm trying to say is I feel like our cemetery, while it's filling up, this will, I think, slow down the non-resident. I think, Cole, you feel pretty confident that this will slow down the amount of non-resident requests. I think that we still need to solve the issue about the cemetery. I have some ideas on that. I was sharing with Councilmember Oaks tonight about, you know, the eight acres, if we maybe sold some of them for development and use that money to build the extra part of the cemetery. We don't have to solve that tonight, but I think that, in my mind, that would be the more important topic, and I don't think that this is going to make a giant dent in, by not allowing this, I don't think it makes a giant dent in the time period with which we will need to solve that problem. So, I think we give people the chance to be able to join their families in the place where they, where they were buried and at a pretty extensive cost to them, right? So, it'd have to be really important to them to fork over sixty-four hundred bucks. And I'm ready to make a motion if nobody else is going to say something.
Can I just say something real quick?
Sure.
I think I just kind of have to clarify, because last week I was kind of back and forth on this. I can see where Councilmember Oaks and Councilmember Blackham are coming from on the, you know, we just did this six months ago, and I think I was more in that vein last week, and I've done some thinking on it this week and, you know, the two weeks in between, and kind of had a little bit more clarity and realized, you know, there's some factors that go into this, you know, like we've talked about, we're trying to preserve the life of the cemetery. But like John has been saying, you know, there are people, I just, I always, in a lot of these instances, think about this lady who used to live in my neighborhood, who taught at the school for thirty years but then had to move for mobility issues. She didn't move to like a home, and I assume she's still around. It's been five years. I think technically she wouldn't count as someone who would get to be buried there, and I think, I think that's a disservice to residents who helped build our community, you know, whether they live in Kaseville or not. And like Cole was saying, it's not going to demonstrably add to how quickly it fills up. Yeah, and so, I just think, yeah, I think it's, I think it's an okay thing to do, even though last week I was, or last time I was uncertain. So, I feel like I just wanted to clarify that so that people understood.
Thank you.
And the only thing I'd like to add is, yeah, I'm going to be changing how I vote, but I'm not really changing how I vote. I didn't want it to move forward because I thought we'd already had the policy, and the policy was good enough, and that's how we were going to do it for a while, but since it's going to move, this is probably the best way to do it. So, I'd rather we just never moved it from a work item to an action item, but now that it's an action item, I think they've done the best job they can with what they've got.
Okay, Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve what's been presented here on the, I don't know what we call it, but can we just call it Action Item A, so I don't have to read through the whole thing? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve Action Item A.
Thank you.
No, I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, everyone, for the considerable, the thoughtful. Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone, for the considerable, the thoughtful conversation about that. Okay, councilmember reports. Anyone?
Tomorrow's the 5th, right?
Mm-hmm.
The, let me pull up the information. I think I talked about it in the last council reports, but the, the American Legion is doing their flag retirement. Yeah, annual flag retirement, September 5th, 5:30, at the Leighton Fire Training Center, 1890 North, Fort, anyway, they have over 600 flags to be retired, so it says, "Bring a chair." Might be a while, but I think that's a cool event, so I just wanted to highlight it.
Thank you. It will be. It'll be really neat. American Legion is handling that for us.
Last week, I just want to mention, the Officer Estrada and Officer Swornson, both killed up in Tremonton. The funerals took place last Thursday and Friday, and I attended both of those funerals, and our police department, many officers, and our chief was there on both days. And it was just nice to see police from our community up there to support the family and to support all the other officers. There were a lot of officers from all over the state, from other states. It was quite an experience to be a part of, but I just wanted to give a shout-out to our police department, and thank you for that support.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, well, we wish everyone a great week. Jason Jebba, city manager, report?
Yes, Mayor, very briefly. We would like to do another strategic planning work session with the council in October. And we've looked at it several dates, but right now, the, the one with the most potential appears to be unfortunately Halloween, which is Friday, October 31st. That would be a morning work session, not evening, of course, but I was wondering if that was an open date on everyone's calendars, from like 8 to 11 maybe on that morning, Friday, the 31st. That looking tentatively like a-
What's, what's the likelihood that you guys with kiddos are gonna do like, that they do like a parade?
Yeah, they'll probably do a parade at our kids'.
Oh, yeah. It doesn't, there's nothing magical about that date. I mean, it can be the next, we can look at November dates as well, but-
Sorry.
I'd probably say we do, yeah. I don't think that they would want to miss that, right?
Maybe the 7th of, of November, maybe?
When, how's that day look for everyone? November 7th, in the morning?
We're not gonna do it on that Friday. I'd prefer not to do it on a Friday or a Monday.
Okay.
If we can do it during the week, during, when we're all working and used to it, if that's possible.
I know it's not possible for everybody. Councilmember Hunt's got conflicts, I know, Monday through Thursday.
If we did it in the evening, I can do Monday through Thursday, but it would have to be-
Later.
Fairly late.
Yeah, and I'm-
Seven.
I'm good with an evening.
You're good with an evening?
With seven.
Okay.
Seven would be fine.
I've always said, you put the date, I'll be there.
I, I could do, I could do an evening as well, so.
In that case, you know, let me circulate some dates around for the Monday through Thursday included, and just see what works. I'll do a doodle poll or something, see what works best for everybody.
What's that? Have you, is Google poll that one, where you just send and you can click on the ones?
Yep, I'll have several options. Just have everyone kind of click the ones that work, and then we'll just see what looks the best.
Yep.
Perfect. And then the other question regarding that is, is there a preference for meeting here at City Hall versus off-site? A lot of times, city councils like to just kind of have a little bit of a break and just go somewhere different, kind of gives them a fresh perspective, being outside of the normal environment, I guess. I know the Utah Local Governments Trust building down in North Salt Lake will offer their conference room for free. It's a nice, I think you've met there before. And Zion's Bank, who we do a lot of work with, they've also offered their conference room on the top of their tower downtown. It has a nice overview of the Capitol and Temple Square. Just a different place to have it, but I don't know if there's a preference. That's also a travel thing, so if it's-
I'm, I'm okay being here. It sounds like most of us are okay being here. What do you think, guys?
It does make it convenient, yeah.
This is our home. We love it.
Frankly, it's a lot easier on us.
It's just, it's just convenient, so.
We, since we have to record that meeting, it is a public meeting.
Okay.
The technology is a lot easier, since we do it in this room, we're used to it, rather than trying to set up technology in a new place, so.
Okay. Maybe we could just bring treats or something, you know, snacks.
Excellent. We'll make up some-
Candles.
Yeah, yeah, something.
See, we can talk Nick's wife into making cookies.
Ice cream sundays or something.
You don't want that, trust me. Great. And then the other question was, we have the Utah Legal Citizens and Towns Conference coming up, October 1st and 2nd. And then on that Friday, October 3rd, there's an all-day training that's being put on by the Utah Legal Citizens and Towns on conflict management. I was curious if anyone was interested in that training. It's, it's a full day, 9 to 3 training down at the U of U Law School, but I think they've done a good job with putting it together. If, if there's interest, if you could let me know by tomorrow, because they've now opened it up to beyond just city councils, but all public officials and staff. So it's, might fill up pretty quick. But just, again, that's October 3rd from 9 to 3, so I'll put out a reminder tomorrow as well.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right, everyone. Would someone like, that's a wrap. Someone like to join us?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.